Collier County, Board of County Commissioners, Community Redevelopment Agency Board, Airport Authority, Meeting Agenda. Board of County Commission Chambers, Collier County Government Center, 3299 Tamiami Trail East, 3rd floor, Naples, Florida 34112, Tuesday, July 11th, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. Commissioner Penny Taylor, District 4, BCC Chair. Commissioner Andy Solis, District 2, BCC Vice Chair. Commissioner Donna Fiala, District 1, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Bert Saunders, District 3. Commissioner William L. McDaniel Jr., District 5, CRAB Co-Chair. Notice: All persons wishing to speak on an agenda item must register prior to presentation of the agenda item to be addressed. All registered speakers will receive up to three minutes unless the time is adjusted by the chairman. Requests to address the board on subjects which are not on this agenda must be submitted in writing with explanation to the county manager at least 13 days prior to the date of the meeting and will be heard under public petitions. Public petitions are limited to the presenter with a maximum time of 10 minutes. Any person who decides to appeal a decision of this board will need a record of the proceeding pertaining thereto and therefore may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Collier County Ordinance #2003-53 is amended by Ordinance 2004-05 and 2007-24. Requires that all lobbyists shall before engaging in any lobbying activities including but not limiting to addressing the board of county commissioners, register with the clerk to the board at the Board Minutes and Records Department. If you are a person with a disability who needs any accommodation in order to participate in this proceeding, you are entitled at no cost to you the provision of certain assistance. Please contact the Collier County Facilities Management Division located at 3335 East Tamiami Trail, Suite 1, Naples, Florida or call 252-8380. Assisted listening devices for the hearing impaired are available in the Facilities Management Division. Lunch recess is scheduled for 12 noon to 1:00 p.m. Item 1: Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. 1A: Reverend Dr. Bob Scuttiere, Member of Peace Lutheran Church. Item 2: Agenda and Minutes. 2A: Approval of Today's Regular Consent and Summary Agenda as amended, Ex parte disclosure provided by commission members for consent agenda. Item 2B: June 6, 2017 BCC Mental Health Workshop. 2C: June 13, 2017 BCC Regular Meeting Minutes. 2D: June 15, 2017 BCC Budget Workshop. Item 3: Awards and Recognition. 3D: Employee of the Month. Recommendation to recognize Lemec Charrenfonte, Traffic Signal Technician, Growth Management Department, as the June 2017 Employee of the Month. Item 4: Proclamations. Item 5: Presentations. 5A: Presentation of the Collier County Business of the Month for July 2017 to Off the Hook Comedy Club, to be accepted by Brian Spina, Owner of Off the Hook Comedy Club, and Susan Kuhar, Account Executive of the Great Old Naples Chamber of Commerce. Item 6: Public Petitions. Item 7: Public comment on general topics not on the current or future agenda. Item 8: Board of Zoning Appeals. 8A: This item to be heard at 1:30 p.m. This item requires that all participants be sworn in and ex parte disclosure be provided by commission members. Judith S. Palais and 92 other property owners within the Coker Hachi Bay Neighborhood Communities filed an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals of the Administrative Approval of Building Separations, Building Wits, Building Dwelling Units, and Building Heights in the Site Development Plan Amendment (SDPAPL20160002242) for Kalia Bay (aka Kinseal condominium phases 2 through 6). The subject property is located at the northwest and northeast corners of Wiggins Pass Road and Vanderbilt Drive-in Sections 8, 16, 17, and 20 Township 48 South Rains 25 East in Collier County. Item 9: Advertised Public Hearings. 9A: This item to be continued from June 27, 2017 meeting. This item requires that ex parte disclosure be provided by commission members. Should a hearing be held on this item, all participants are required to be sworn in. Recommendation to approve an ordinance amending Ordinance #2007-46 is amended by the Wolf Creek RPUD to approve insubstantial changes to the PUD to add a preserve exhibit that revises the preserve configuration for partials 3B and 9 only and providing for an effective date. This subject property is located on the north side of Redebell Beach Road approximately one half mile west of Collier Boulevard in Section 34 Township 48 South Rains 26 East, Collier County, Florida, consisting of 189 plus or minus acres. Item 10: Board of County Commissioners. 10A: Recommendation to direct the county manager or his agent to perform an evaluation for a proposed advisory committee for senior citizens affairs and bring back a report following the direction provided by county ordinance 01-55 Section 3B as amended that provides information regarding the need, benefit, cost, and purpose of creating a new advisory committee or if an already existing public or private board serves the same intended purpose. Item 11: County Manager's Report. 11A: Recommendation to adopt a resolution establishing a proposed millage rate as the maximum property tax rates to be levied in FY 2017-18 and reaffirm the advertised public hearing dates in September 2017 for the budget approval process. 11B: Recommendation to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $70 million in aggregate principal amount of Collier County, Florida Tourist Development Tax Revenue Bonds in one or more series to finance and/or refinance cost of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of an amateur sports complex and pledging money received by the county from the tourist development tax to secure payment of the principal and interest on bonds issued. 11C: Recommendation to direct staff, either 1) prepare an ordinance to ban medical marijuana dispensing facilities from locating within the boundaries of Collier County or 2) to continue to publicly vet a Land Development Code (LDC) amendment to permit medical marijuana dispensaries in the same zoning districts as pharmacies. 11D: Recommendation to award invitation to bid #177164 Collier County Landscape Beautification Master Plan, Collier Boulevard, US 41 to Mariano Circle Landscape and Irrigation Installation Construction Project to Hanula Landscaping and Irrigation Incorporated in the amount of $1,087,590.21. 11A: Recommendation to award contract #16-6699 to HNTV Corporation for professional design and related services for the 11 Bridge Replacements Project #66066 in the amount of $2,459,845.80, pursuant to RFP #16-6699 and authorize the chair to execute the attached contract. 11F: Recommendation to declare that emergency conditions exist at Clan Pass, waive the property ordinance ratified (Quote) Request 17-7181 with a compressed solicitation schedule and authorize the county manager or his designee to enter into a contract with Donald Dowchuck Tractor Services for $84,500 and authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $54,500. Item 12: County Attorney's Report. Item 13: Other Constitutional Officers. Item 14: Airport Authority and/or Community Redevelopment Agency. 14A: Airport Authority. 14B: Community Redevelopment Agency. Item 15: Staff and Commission General Communications. Item 16: Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine and action will be taken by one motion without separate discussion of each item. If discussion is desired by a member of the board, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For more information on consent agenda items, call 252-8586.